Hello there. The February 14, 2018 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is convened. That's Valentine's Day edition. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Platt?
Here.
Commissioner Gambetti?
Here.
Commissioner Moreland-Kapuya?
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here. Thank you. All right. First up, we have Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Moreland-Kapuya, would you like to start?
So, Planned Parenthood Annual Election on the 25th of January and the Hill Block Project Meeting on the 31st of January.
Great, thank you. And who would like to go next? Mr. Myers?
I don't have anything to report this month.
Mr. Gambetti?
Yeah, not so much in the capacity of the, as a Commissioner, but I did attend a Affordable Housing Conference that was put on by Meyer Memorial Trust, and I moderated a plenary session on how to cut costs in developing affordable housing. So it was a fruitful discussion, an all-day event, very well organized.
Thank you. Mr. Platt?
Yes, attendance at the Scanner MLK Breakfast and also January 22nd meeting with Bobby Lee from Prosper Portland and Kingsley Choi, a Nike digital specialist, explore options for job creations in tech.
Great, thank you. I also attended the 32nd Annual Scanner MLK Breakfast, which was a great event, had an NWDA Board meeting on the 15th, an Elevate Capital Reception on the 17th, Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber Board meeting on the 23rd, Prosper Portland Budget Work Session on the 24th, Prosper Portland Financial Sustainability Plan Work Session with City Council on the 30th, and then a Mayor's Council of Economic Advisors on the 9th. So, thank you. All right, and next up, the Executive Director Report. Kimberly?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. We've had a full month, and we have a full agenda, so I'm going to hit a couple key milestones and then make sure that we have time for testimony and conversation. I attended the Portlandia Season Eight premiere event on Tuesday, January 16th. It's the final season of Portlandia, and as the city's Office of Film and Video here, we've helped make that production run more smoothly by providing concierge service as they go around Portland and getting permits there. Want to note that over its eight-year run in Portland, the Portlandia production had a significant economic impact, almost $40 million of direct spending, 200 annual jobs with almost $15 million in payroll, and they paid nearly $65,000 in film permit fees. So we applaud them for their success in the last eight years, and we're glad to see that they finished with a bang. Along with our board members presented the Financial Sustainability Plan at a work session, the City Council on Tuesday, January 30th, had a good conversation about how we continue to support the work of creating an equitable economy. We'll plan to bring back feedback to this board later this spring. I also attended the Hill Block Project Working Group on January 31st. Want to note that the first event of that group, that was the orientation, the first event will be taking place on Tuesday, February 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 or 8:30 p.m. at the New Song Church and Community Center. You can learn more at prosperportland.us/hillblock, but the first meeting will really be a community awareness raising to understand the process going forward and to hear from the project working group members themselves. Prosper Portland sponsored Ascent Fundings: Breaking Barriers to Capital on Friday, February 2nd. The event was a conversation about helping to identify and overcome barriers to financial capital for entrepreneurs of color and other diverse small businesses. Lent's Common on the corner of 92nd and Foster received certification of occupation, which is an important milestone for that project earlier this month. There are some residential tenants now moving into the building. It's 50% leased at this point. Staff is engaged in a number of conversations with potential retail tenant, retail, commercial tenants, and we'll host an official grand opening in the next few months, so we'll look forward to celebrating that project. I also attended the Scanner Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, I'm sorry, Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast, and celebrated all of the students who received scholarships, pleased to be able to support that, those students. I attended the Do Good for Rosewood event on February 9th to celebrate the amazing work that's happening out in Rosewood. We are proud to partner with Rosewood. The Broadway Corridor Request for Qualifications closed also on February 9th. We received nine high-quality proposals. Over the next week, staff will be reviewing those proposals for minimum qualifications, and we will be holding a public forum for the top two to four finalists on March 21st. So go to our website if you'd like more information on that. We are aiming to come back to the board with a recommendation for a development partner at our May 9th Prosper Portland Board Meeting. So lots of work between now and then to get a great group down to a top candidate. We're pleased to have Prosper Portland sponsor a new exhibit at the Oregon Historical Society presented by Oregon Black Pioneers and running now through June 24th. The exhibit examines how racist attitudes, policies of exclusion, and the destruction of Black-owned neighborhoods shaped Oregon and chronicles the unceasing efforts of the Black community to overcome these obstacles. Want to recognize Prosper Portland's own Kim Moreland, who led the creation of this incredible exhibit, and to encourage anyone who hasn't gone to go. Not only is it a great event to walk through, but there's some really interesting and engaging events that are taking place in the next few months. I also had the opportunity to attend Kairos' Spread the Love event last night, and am looking forward to attending along with members of the Portland Housing Bureau and the Mayor's Office, River Place Parcels III Groundbreaking Event for a new Tower of Affordable Housing in the South Waterfront on Friday, February 16th. And finally, the Request for Proposals for the ODOT Blocks closes on Wednesday, February 28th at 5:00 p.m. Hoping to see a number of industrial mixed-use proposals for that central city site, so looking forward to hearing and seeing who comes in. So I'd like to recognize four new colleagues and welcome them to Prosper Portland. So first, Yvonne Smoker is a new project coordinator with the Economic and Community, Entrepreneurship and Community Economic Development Team, sorry. She arrived in Portland, Oregon via Philadelphia, where she was the associate producer at a film and commercial production company. She's originally from Dallas, Texas, where she studied film production at the University of Texas in Austin, Texas, yep, where she lived and worked for almost 20 years. She has years of experience coordinating and managing various commercial projects from virtual reality projects to capital campaign videos for higher education, so she's putting those amazing coordination and creative skills to work on a number of projects, including the Hill Block and a lot of things to boot. John Wasserman is going to be our, he is our Assistant General Counsel, and he is a graduate of Ohio State and the University of Chicago. He comes to us after more than five years with the City of Cincinnati, working as supervising attorney for economic development. In that capacity, he's served as the lead attorney in a variety of complex real estate, finance, and economic incentive transactions that closely resemble what we do here, so we're very fortunate to have John here with us. Manifur Murnakim, sorry, is a new project manager in the development team. He will be leading our efforts in the Hill Block and recently relocated from the Portland region, I'm sorry, to the Portland region from Ohio. He's managed projects in both the development and construction fields, as well as owned and operated his own small business. He has 10-plus years of experience as the founder of TMG Construction Group, which is a real estate development and construction firm, and working for McDonald's Corporations managing commercial real estate projects. So he too is going to hit the ground running, and we're already getting a chance to see that, so we really appreciate his leadership here. Finally, Andrea Gall is project coordinator in the Business and Industry Team. Andrea is joining Prosper Portland from the Urban League of Portland, where she managed the Urban Tech Jobs Program. Prior to relocating to Portland, Andrea worked for BP and was based out of Singapore, focusing on business management systems implementation across Southeast Asia. She started with BP in Houston as strategy manager on environmental remediation projects across the U.S. and Canada. She was born in Calgary, Canada, and was raised in New Jersey and Texas. She will be helping on some of our international efforts and will be an important member of the Business and Industry Team, so really fortunate to have her as well. So welcome. Glad to have each of you. Thanks.
Thank you, and welcome to everybody. Very happy to have you. Thanks. Okay, so next up, we have two sets of minutes, one for November 8, 2017, and one for January 10, 2018. Would someone like to make a motion and a second to approve the minutes, assuming there are no comments?
Still moved. Moved to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have no public comment, I believe. Okay. All right, so Item Six is next up. This is to authorize a reinstated lease and an option to purchase agreement to VOS Workers' Rights Education Project for the Prosper Portland-owned property located at 240 Northeast Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard within the Central Eastside Urban Renewal Area. So, Myra, Damian Crowder, Romeo Sosa, Peter Parks, I believe, and Francisco Aguirre, join us?
Peter, okay. Yes, he's right there. Good afternoon, Executive Director Brenham and Commissioners. I'm Myra Rola, and I'm the Director of Social Equity Policy and Communications at Prosper Portland, and with me, we also have-
Damian Crowder, project manager, Community Economic Development.
And VOS representatives?
Romeo Sosa, the Executive Director of VOS.
Francisco Aguirre, the day laborer.
I'm Peter Parks, I'm an executive manager of the video.
Welcome to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we are here to present the proposal to reinstate the lease for five years for the property in which VOS is currently located and convey property for $319,100 to construct and operate Permanent Worker's Center. I also want to mention that after this meeting, Prosper Portland will also provide a special authority grant for $40,000 to VOS that is going to help with some program feasibility studies with site due diligence and programming to support operational efforts from the agency. The other thing that I want to share is that this is the result of almost a year-long process in which both Damian and I have been meeting with Romeo, Francisco, Peter, Paul, and day laborers and other representatives from the organization in an effort to, you know, arrive to a point in which we, you know, Prosper Portland could support their efforts and also was able to secure a location in an equitable way, to increase transparency, communication, and shared on this understanding of the structures in which both organizations operate under, and to have a shared agreement, which is why we're here today. So with that, Damian is going to talk about, give some background also of this project.
Good afternoon. I'm Damian Crowder, project manager here at Prosper Portland. VOS started at the 240, wow, I'm actually nervous, that's interesting, MLK site in 2008, and they officially became a 501(c)(3) corporation. And during that time, we were in the midst of a recession, and they provided a great space for day laborers to find work, for employers to come to as well. They also protected the rights of workers as well, and they represented the voice of people that were forced into silence in many ways. At the site, they had a five-year lease with Prosper Portland from 2008 to 2013, and since that time, from 2013 to the present day, they've been on a month-to-month lease. They've always wanted to acquire the property, and we've been kind of working towards like, how do we make this come to a reality? VOS has been a very important partner for Prosper Portland and in the Central Eastside, not only for the tangible benefits of helping people find employment, but also for the intangible of helping people have a place to build community, have people have a place to feel safe, and just to kind of come together and kind of have somewhat of a home away from home. And that's one of the things that can't be stated enough. Work is important, important, but also feeling that you have a place of belonging as well. VOS has been a proud contributor to the neighborhood. They provide security as well, wealth creation, and they fit in alignment with Prosper Portland's 2015-2020 strategic plan. With this partnership, they represent placemaking in an area that's rapidly gentrifying, and they allow for the day laborers to have a place to congregate, a place to meet, and also a place to learn skill development through classes and trainings that are held at the Worker's Center. During our 10-year relationship with VOS, Prosper Portland has supported VOS in a variety of ways. We have managed operational grants for VOS for the past four years. We've also have consistently sponsored their annual fundraising dinner. We also sponsored an event that was New American Jobs Fair back in 2015 as well. We also provided a $20,000 community livability grant to address safety concerns at the site where they constructed a brand-new fence, and also there's going to be security cameras there as well. In addition to that, we've also provided $10,000 technical support, technical support for business assistance, for grant development, for a business plan, also to look at fundraising capital campaign effort as well for their new site. With the transaction that we bring to you today, the sales price is $319,100. And the reason why that number is significant is that was the assessed value of the property when VOS moved to the site in 2008. And we agreed upon that price because that represent their entry to the area, and we did not want them to be victim to rapidly arise in appreciation that the private sector is seeing in that area. So that's a way for Prosper Portland to address commercial affordability for partners that we work with. We feel that that price is justified, that discounted price is justified, given the public benefit that VOS provides, not only as a place for employers and employees to meet, but also their social justice work as well. And, here you go.
The other thing we want to highlight is the equitable impact of this support or, you know, collaborating with VOS in making sure they have a stable and secure place to do, you know, to support their community. They, as we all know, work primarily with day laborers, with immigrant populations that are, in most cases, really experiencing extreme hardship when coming to this country without a lot of connections or support, stable housing, access to resources or benefits. So this is the impact of having a place that they know they can convene, find a job in a safe environment with support systems, with people that can help them navigate and provide some guidance as to how to access best job opportunities. It's crucial, and there aren't that many opportunities for people that are coming to this country on their, that basis to receive that type of support. So it is an extremely important service that they provide. With that, now Romeo and Francisco and Peter are going to provide more background and also share their hopes and plans for the future.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners and Prosper Portland staff. As I say, my name is Romeo Sosa. I'm the Executive Director of VOS, and I just want to thank you first for having us here, but also I want to thank you special for Damian and Myra, that they worked for a year with us during all this negotiation. Commissioner, we stand here before you asking for your approval in granting VOS Worker Rights Education Project a five-year lease and an option to purchase in order to continue, improve the lives of day laborers. VOS is a worker-led organization that empower diverse day laborers and immigrants to improve their working conditions and protect their civil rights through leadership development, organizing, education, and economic opportunities. Day laborer are predominantly low-income Latin American men, but the community is very diverse, men, women, immigrants, citizens, and people from all over the world that come to the Worker's Center looking for work. All day laborers, they want, it's an honest day of work in order to feed themselves and their families, their fathers, mothers, sons, daughters. They leave the country because their extreme poverty, violence, and political turmoil. The vote today is affecting the whole community of hard-working working people seeking security, economic opportunity, and dignity. Day laborers face extreme economics and housing insecurity. As a solution to insecure informal markets, day labor operating, the Worker's Center stepped in to prevent labor and civil rights abuses, improve the working condition, and recover unpaid wages. Since VOS opened, started, we have recovered about $600,000 in wages that in the beginning employers didn't want to pay. They monitor and enforce the minimum wage over time, health and safety. It is more than just a worker's center. Also, through the Worker's Center, they participate in civic participation in cleanups in the neighborhood and graffiti removal campaigns. They are empowered to engage in community issue and bring the voices of the labor community to the public decision like today. As a culturally specific community center, since 2008, the MLK Junior Worker's Center gives day labor access to dignified jobs, opportunities, education, and skills to advocate for their rights as a worker and/or immigrants. Over 450 day laborers, almost 90% of VOS members participate in workforce and leadership development programming in 2017. Also in 2017, day laborers earned almost $500,000 in wages to the Worker's Center. All of this important work has been accomplished through temporary structures, a trailer and supportive parties. To keep growing support and building, we need a permanent structure. You can help us today to building the dream of a permanent building by voting to approve the five-year lease and an option to purchase. Together, we can build the dream. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. As a day laborer, I do want to put myself as an example. Hi, you all, as a Prosper Portland boss, being very helpful for us, the workers. I was 17 years old when I got to live in Portland, where I end up getting the support from this amazing organization, VOS. All what I know, I own it to the organization. I'm 38 now, and I'm very proud to be sitting right here talking about the amazing work VOS are doing. And with your vote today, expecting that you're going to vote yes, I can tell my community of day laborers will be proud of you because you will be part of the building, the dream that we all, day laborers, have in the corner. The structure we have right now is not enough to get all those trainings that we are seeking right now. We need skills training that can prepare the amazing community of Portland because it's not only immigrants who attend at the Worker's Center. It's people from different race who come to the Worker's Center and get benefit from that center. that center. So please, help us to accomplish the dream. Building a dream campaign is everybody's responsibility. We love Portland. I consider myself as a Portlandian. Thank you very much.
So I'm Peter Parks. I'm on the Executive Committee. I'm actually the Secretary of VOS, and I have a short statement. So we're thinking, you know, what is the dream? The MLK Worker Center is a place where people from all walks of life can find shelter, employment with a living wage, skills training, community, and friendship. This center will be led by workers who are motivated to find solutions to poverty and discrimination. We dream of a building that houses not only VOS, but also other organizations dedicated to enriching the lives of those who have historically been the have-nots. Organizations that provide services like housing, healthcare, and legal advice. In its new building, in the location where, for a long time, employers and workers have met to bargain for the sale of labor, VOS will be a nucleus for the formation of worker-led community improvement. The dream is in the minds of the horneros, the day laborers. The fulfillment of that dream starts with a place where a building will be built to house that dream. Thank you.
The first of the two groups. Apologies for the mic. Justin Norton Kurtson, Alyssa Pagan, and Marco Mejia. If you could please join us, that'd be great. Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks. So my name is Justin Norton Kurtson. I'm here on behalf of Portland Jobs with Justice, which is a local coalition of over 100 labor faith community and student organizations that work together to take action for economic justice and workers' rights. And I'm here today to voice our support for the permanent day labor center. For over a decade now, the VOS Day Labor Center has been a real sanctuary for day labor workers, a place where they can get a good, decent living wage, a place where they can come together to organize their labor and to protect themselves from wage theft and discrimination, and a place where they can shelter themselves from the elements while they're waiting for and looking for work. And in a city like Portland that really prides itself on being a sanctuary city, we think it's only that much more important that we provide a safe and secure place where day laborers can come together and do the work that is really important to this community. You know, when we talk about economic justice and workers' rights and the need for jobs with justice, we're not just talking about some workers in some jobs. We're really talking about everyone. And so, in that spirit, we're here to really strongly voice our support for a permanent day labor center with the option to buy for VOS and to thank you in advance for voting yes on this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Pagan. I'm with Don't Shoot Portland, a community action plan, anti-violence project, and a group in the movement for Black Lives. And we know that in this, the era of Trump, who is very actively and unapologetically attacking Black and Brown people in the U.S. and around the world, that we need to call on everyone that has the capacity to help build the sanctuary that we all hope and claim to advocate for. And I cannot think of any organization or group of people that are making that a reality than VOS. So I hope that we continue to speak up, but that we make tangible strides that will actually show with our actions that we are sanctuary and that we support immigrant communities and workers. So again, like Justin said, I advocate for and hope that you do too, a permanent place for VOS to work and run and advocate. Thank you all.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marco Mejia, and I'm here as a community member, even though I'm also a member of a number of groups in the community that are working for social justice and peace and equity and all of that. I wanted to be here, and I, just for the record, I used to be also a board member at VOS at some point. I wanted to mention that VOS is a unique organization of its kind here in Portland. There's no other organization like VOS, and we really need VOS. And for all the reasons that everyone is mentioning here, and I will add that the uniqueness of VOS is that it's not just a worker center, as we call it, right, the Martin Luther King Worker Center, but it is really a center that promotes the building of the community. And I like to use the word prosper and prosperity because I think that VOS, that's what it's promoting also here, in terms of supporting the most vulnerable workers out there. And by the way, it's not just serving immigrants, as many people think, that it's just for immigrants, right? And people that don't like the center always, you know, even in a negative way, saying that it serves immigrants, even though it's not, right? But if you come by the center, you can see that there's veterans, you know, of different wards in the United States that don't have employment, that they come and do look for a job at VOS, and they find a VOS, you know, as one of the places that is supporting them. It is a center where a lot of unemployed people come. I remember, you know, during the crisis eight, 10 years ago, the center grew a lot in terms of the workers coming to find for a job because unemployment was very big. And it continues being a problem of unemployment here in Portland. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that VOS is a unique organization also because it's connected to the whole fabric of the life in the city in Portland. I do also work for the city of Portland for the Office of Native Employment. And right now, we are working on developing some recommendations for city council to make the city, you know, welcoming, inclusive, and a sanctuary city. As you all know, last year, we had a, I'm sorry, forgot the name of it, but anyway, a resolution supporting and making it, you know, a sanctuary city. And VOS is one of those organizations that are supporting and coming to the table to help us to vision that, how we can make it a sanctuary city, you know, in reality. So in the overall, what I'm saying is that really, we need VOS. Actually, VOS is doing a unique, I said, thank you, a unique contribution to the city, and it's needed. And it doesn't need just to have a renewal of the contract. I think that what VOS needs is a home, a permanent home, that really, you know, we as a city, and proper Portland, and all of us, if we're talking about equity, really, they're not building a hotel, they're not building a mall, et cetera, but they're building a project that is really helping the city, you know, the citizens, for the citizens to work together and to survive and to be, you know, the fabric, the prosperity city. Thank you.
Thanks very much to all of you. Appreciate you.
And I'm sorry for taking a little.
No, no. It's fine. All right, and we have two more guests. Mark Knutson with Augustana Lutheran Church and Chelsea Watson with Oregon AFL-CIO.
So thank you, Chair Cruz, and all of you, all the Commission members and Executive Director Brennan. Last time I was here, we marched across the bridge, and it was still the Portland Development Commission, so it's good to be here with the name like Prosper Portland. My name is Mark Knutson. I'm Senior Pastor of Augustana Lutheran Church here in northeast Portland, a thriving congregation of many peoples and a church that declared sanctuary back in 1996. And so, in 2014, helped to establish the National New Sanctuary Movement that has now grown to 11,000, from six to seven churches to 1,100 churches, synagogues, mosques, and temples across the country. And we know that be a sanctuary church, or synagogue, mosque, or temple, or be a sanctuary city or county takes intentional actions, and lots of allies and partners, and this community certainly has them. VOS is, as was said a few minutes earlier, is an extremely powerful, unique organization. I think the hardest people, working people in the city are day laborers. I can go in my office, have a cup of coffee, close the door, and stay dry. We can come to a beautiful place like this for a meeting. And here, these day laborers are not only some of the hardest working people in the city, but some of them was gifted too, gifts that are being developed and shared across our metro area. So I speak highly in favor of the proposed action you're getting ready to take. I can't speak highly enough of Romeo Sosa and the staff of VOS, the day laborers, and the staff who worked on this. Thank you to both Maya and Damian for the good collaboration with VOS. This is Ash Wednesday, and I would have multiple services today. Usually, I won't come to a meeting, but this is so important, and I want to be here for your action to celebrate with you what you're about to do. This will be a powerful statement to our city and to our nation in a day when immigrants and refugees, you know, million DACA young leaders, 12 million refugees in this country, not refugees, but immigrants who have been here for many years, but then 65 million refugees around the world, to see a city taking action like this. And I pray that it won't just be the action of selling the land. I hope we will come together as a community and make it one of the most beautiful, green centers in this city and state that the workers can share with us and be proud of. That is what we are building together. We have to be intentional, otherwise things get developed without blinking an eye. And so I ask you to be a part of that. Let me say also, one of the readings on this Ash Wednesday is from Isaiah 58 from the Hebrew Scriptures. And it speaks about when we work together, we don't have battles, we become like a watered garden, and we will be called the repairers of the breach and the restorers of the streets to live in. We'll build up the foundations for many generations to come. That's what you're about. Every seed helps. I chair the, I'm closing with this. I was asked to chair the Allies of the VOS Day Labor Center, and we just did a brainstorming recently. We already have a number in the coalition to support this, but we can imagine 40, 50, maybe 100 faith communities, labor organizations, nonprofits, foundations, and others coming to the table around this to make this center a hallmark for the city. And to the day laborers, I just say thank you for asking all of us to partner with them. As they lead the way, we follow and walk alongside. Thank you for taking this action.
Hello, Chair and Commissioners and Prosper Portland staff. Thank you for having me. I'm Chelsea Watson with the Oregon AFL-CIO. As a state Federation of Labor, the Oregon AFL-CIO represents over 135,000 workers from a diverse array of sectors, and I'm here today because our mission as an organization is to build power for working families, and VOS is an invaluable partner in that work by advocating for the workers in our city that need it the most, who are most likely to be exploited, face wage theft and discrimination. In addition to helping with those workers' rights logistics, it also promotes equity in our city, which is also a value of my organization, as well as contributes to Oregon's growing economy. So with a permanent structure, VOS could further benefit the community with spaces designed for job placement, skills trainings, and community meetings. So for that reason, I respectfully urge you to authorize a reinstated lease with an option to purchase. Thank you.
Thanks very much to all the speakers. Thank you. So Commissioners, shall we have the initial panel up for a few questions or comments? Okay, all right. Yes, please. That was a great presentation. Does someone like to start?
I'd like to start. I'm going to address this to Romeo. Romeo, you and I have worked together for a long time on a lot of different parts of this. We participated together in the 2015 Job Fair. The affiliates that I work for were most of the ones that came down and set up booths to work with different folks. The $600,000 that you, your organization has recovered in wage theft should be applauded. That doesn't even begin to scratch the surface on what isn't reported and what is reported and not collected. Doesn't even scratch the surface, but what you've done is more than most organizations have, and I applaud you for that. The numbers, the 500 listed as being served by VOS, that's over the years, is that correct? Or is that all still today, you have 500 total that you're serving, or that's over the years? Is that correct?
Years. Yeah, we serve, the day laborers come like a different, for the season, there are different numbers every time, but we have in our list a total of 300 day laborers in our database that we serve.
Yeah, so is that 500, excuse me, 500 day laborers annually? Or is that over the amount of time that VOS has been an organization?
Yeah, like I mentioned, we have like about 300 day laborers in our database that we serve.
So the number that you're serving and helping find jobs that helps them also find housing is something to be applauded as well. I will be voting in favor of this resolution, and a lot of it is owed to you and your organization. So thank you, Romeo, for keeping up the good work, and thank you for everyone that came here to speak in favor.
Thank you.
I just have a few comments. I first want to thank the Prosper Portland staff who has, I believe, worked very diligently to partner and to hold true to our commitment to the things that I think have been spoken to today. And I want to mention some of those themes just so that we're all on the same page. Placemaking was mentioned, and the commitment to adhering to that, wealth creation, addressing commercial affordability, which you said you were nervous, but you did an excellent job of sort of highlighting these very key points. And then, of course, the equity impact. And I think what we hear today is really sort of two phases, right? There is the phase of creating the opportunity and capacity to build, and then there's the actual process of building. I don't think that anyone here disagrees with any of the statements that were made today. I think what you will find is that we are definitely in agreement that providing the opportunity for traditionally marginalized populations to succeed and to excel economically is certainly a goal, and we definitely want to see that happen. I didn't expect to hear the word be brought here today, but thank you, Pastor, for that kind reminder as well, because what it did was also serve as a reminder for the fact, the very clear fact is that it's going to take everyone in this room and every discipline to help build this dream. So Prosper Portland I see as being sort of foundational and a catalyst, but it will require the faith community, it will require not-for-profit organizations. And my plea is that everyone in this room will be advocating just as strongly as you are in here today with those other organizations as well, to ensure that this becomes a reality. So I want to encourage you in that. And again, thank you, and of course, I fully support the endeavor and do hope to see it realized over time.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone for their testimony, all very powerful and compelling. I think Alyssa's comments, I think resonated particularly strongly with me in that I think this is needed today more than ever, probably in the history of your organization, in terms of making this kind of statement in our community and across the country. So I did want to, though, just ask a couple of questions of Mira, Damian, just a little bit more about the deal points of this. So in terms of what happens if it's acquired, what happens if they build or don't build, if they then sell the property, are there just some milestone things there that you could touch on?
In the, so basically, we're looking at a five-year lease and a five-year option to purchase. There is language in the term if they do not build, Prosper Portland can repurchase the property for the $319,100. And if the property were sold, Prosper Portland would recapture the ratio difference between the would recapture the ratio difference between the, the market value and the purchase price. So that will stay consistent. So the Prosper Portland would maintain the same ratio if it were sold.
And then the one other comment I wanted to make, someone mentioned, maybe perhaps it was Peter, that there might be the opportunity to partner with other organizations on this site, is that right? Are you guys looking at potentially building more than just your space needs, but also serving other organizations? Maybe?
Right now, no.
Okay.
But it could be an option.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. What?
First to thank you Damian and Myra for all your hard work. And Senores Sosa y Ayde, thank you for being here and for testifying. I think it's a, it's very timely, and I think something that I will certainly vote in favor of. I'd like to continue the conversation because as everyone who's been in this development type of process before, it's a long road, right? And the dream is there, the vision is there. I'd like to know more and over the next few months, and help understand, or help me understand what it is that you're thinking of, because all of us here, as alluded to earlier, are here to support. It is going to take many community members to build what you have in mind. And I think the more we can get clarity as to what that vision is, in very concrete terms, the better we'll be able to marshal resources to support you. So thank you again.
Well, I would just reiterate a couple of things that the other Commissioners have said. I'm extremely happy to see this come together. I've been fortunate to come out and meet with the VOS management a few times, and, and it's really an impressive project and impressive group of people. And I think we're all just super excited to see this actually happen. I know the effort predates all of our term on the Commission, so there's been a lot of years and effort way before all of us got here on this, but it's been neat to see it come together just over the last three years. So, so I would just thank all of you for your hard work, the staff and VOS and all of your community supporters. I'd also like to thank my fellow Commissioners, because they've showed continued interest in this project and been very supportive. So thanks to all of you for that as well. So unless there are any further comments or questions, I think we'll go ahead and vote. So, all right. Well, would someone like to, oh, I'm sorry.
Want a motion?
Oh, motion? Yes, well, I was gonna, just gonna ask for that.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 7261.
Thank you, sir. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So I hope we captured that on video, and we can replay that like time and time again.
A happy, happy event.
The start of every meeting.
The start of every meeting.
Don't get that very often doing. Okay. All right. So next up, we have item number seven. And this is an action item requesting that the Portland City Council designate Prosper Portland as the entity authorized to administer the industrial sites readiness program on behalf of the City of Portland. And Bobby Lee and Allison Wicks will join us to discuss that. So welcome Bobby and Allison.
I have a flu, so you might want to scoot over. Thank you. Chair Cruz, Bobby Lee with Economic Development, Members of Commission, and Executive Director Kimmy Branham. The audience is leaving. We have a boring topic, I guess, but I find this topic to be extremely exciting. Before I start, I wanted to thank Allison and Justin. I got hit by a flu, and I just couldn't step up this week, and so they had to really step up and get ready for today's presentation. So I owe you guys a big lunch or something, but thank you for stepping up. Appreciate that. This issue may sound a little boring, I'm going to be honest with you, but I find it really exciting. And, and there's, it's because in the course of my work in economic development, I interface with this issue in multiple different ways. One, when I was in the private sector, we purchased an industrial land, 200 acres, and we had to develop it and build it, what is called an eight-inch fabs in a semiconductor manufacturing, it's called DRAM manufacturing company. And we had to start from scratch. We had to purchase the property and build it up. It took two years just to get through the permitting process. And so we actually had to skip a generation of memory chips to catch up with the changing economy because of the bureaucracy that was involved. So I was directly involved with that. Second is that I used to be on the local elected officials of the Eugene City Council and helped shape policies around these type of land use planning, and saw, brought that perspective and learned quite a bit about that perspective. And the perspective is, you've got to have a balance of the right type of sectors in a community to generate enough revenue to pay for your core services. So residential homes by itself won't do the trick. You have to have a balance of industries, civic, public sectors all engaged, and have a diverse tax base in order to fund your core services. The last part is, when I was here at the Governor's Office, I worked with a lot of mayors in 10 counties, and industrial land was my area of expertise. So I understood, I got to quickly work on a lot of the industrial land projects at the local level, from small communities like Cornelius, or North Plains, or Springfield, trying to help them navigate through the bureaucracy around industrial land readiness. And for many small communities, really the initiative is to help generate more funds to pay for core services. And I won't get into Measure Five and all the histories around property tax issues, but local governments are hurting. They don't have enough revenue source to pay for their core services, and so industrial land becomes even more compelling. But the challenging part about industrial lands, however, is that there's a lot of issues that comes along with this type of project. Most of them, number one, and the most costly one, is actually transportation. It's transportation access, freight mobility, a lot of interchange needs to be upgraded in order to meet the specs for the freight industry. Brownfield, a lot of land out there are contaminated, and it's because we used to be an agriculture economy. So a lot of pesticides and so forth are still left behind. So the cost of dealing with that part of it can be enormous. You've got to cap it, bring clean dirt. It's a lot of work. And because we live in a valley, wetland is a huge issue. And so then you have to do wetland mitigation plans, you have to work with the state, federal, all the alphabets, all the different bureaucracies to get through it, DEQ, Department of State Lands, and so forth. They have to go through that process. Historic preservation, we have a long history here in Oregon, and so you can't just build stuff on top of land, you've got to know what's underneath it. So that means you have experts come in and do radar penetration analysis of what's underneath, find out and make sure that you're building on an appropriately assessed land. Power and water infrastructure certainly is a big part of this. And then, a lot of sites are also, have issues around urban growth boundary challenges. A lot of them are, tend to be a little bit, the urban growth boundary tends to be something that they would have to amend in order to bring in certain land size, so that the land size is appropriate for marketing. So there's land use challenges, which could take years. And there's a lot of sites with Endangered Species Act, Kinkaid Lupins, Fender Blue Butterflies, these things are very common. And so then you've got to put that piece onto the table. So the risks are enormous for local governments. But if they don't do it, then they can't keep up the cost of growth. And so that's the challenge that we're trying to solve through this specific proposal here today, which Allison will go into. On top of the fact that local governments are taking huge risks by developing their industrial lands, there's no guarantee it will pay off at the end. You've got to have the right employer land on it, and even if you have the right employer, there's no guarantee you could pay off all the debt that you incurred to build and make these sites shovel-ready. So, and it turns out that the biggest beneficiary of developing industrial lands is not local governments through additional property taxes, it's actually state government through income tax. So the local governments are taking all the risk. Prosper Portland is taking a lot of risks, but the real beneficiary is actually the state through income tax. So what we did in 2013 is we approached the state and said, let's find a way to share the cost of the income tax that you generate through these development projects. And so today's proposal is relatively new proposal, that the legislature approved in 2013, so it's still relatively new, is that when we develop an industrial land and generate good jobs, good family wage jobs, then a portion of the income tax should come back to the local community to offset the cost that we've incurred to build those sites. So essentially, that's what today's proposal is. With that, I'll turn over to Allison.
Hi. Thank you Bobby. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. My name is Allison Wicks. I'm a project coordinator with Prosper Portland. Today, I'm going to walk through an overview of the Industrial Sites Readiness Program, also known as the Regionally Significant Industrial Sites Program, or RSIS. And I'll also share how this program aligns with the Prosper Portland Strategic Plan, as well as our Financial Sustainability Plan, and review the next steps we want to take to bring this program forward. So the, as Bobby has given a great introduction here, the Business Oregon Industrial Sites Readiness Program is intended to provide targeted assistance to sites with unique economic development potential, and provide an incentive to local governments to bring these sites into a shovel-ready state. The goal of the Industrial Sites Readiness Program is to work with industrial sites of regional significance across the state, and to assist in bringing critical infrastructure improvements to sites that would likely not otherwise occur. There are three necessary components that must come together for a project to be a good fit for this program. First, a regionally significant industrial site is a site with comparative advantages, superior transportation and freight infrastructure, that's also in need of additional site preparation costs. A traded sector employer, so in urban areas, this is in a traded sector employer who's going to bring 50 jobs to the site with a compensation of 150% of the state average wage. And third, a public entity sponsor. So this is a public entity who either owns the site, or is in a development agreement with a private developer, and willing to contribute to site preparation costs. This is why we're here today. The public entity sponsor in these agreements have to be an organization with taxing authority. So we're asking for the Board's approval to ask the Portland City Council to be the City of Portland's designated agent for this program. So I'll walk through an example now. So once we have a project with these three main components, Prosper Portland and the traded sector employer will enter into a sponsorship contract. Prosper Portland and Business Oregon will enter into an income tax reimbursement arrangement. And once the traded sector employer has located on the industrial site, expanded its workforce, brought those 50 jobs, Prosper Portland will be reimbursed for those site preparation costs based on 50% of the income tax generated by the employees of the traded sector employer. For example, if a project has $1 million in costs, in site preparation costs, such as transportation improvements, water and sewer upgrades, environmental remediation, and that project is tentated with a traded sector employer that has 50 jobs, all of which pay 150% of the state average wage, about $79,000 a year. The State of Oregon would receive approximately $350,000 in incremental income taxes every year. Those are the funds that would be used to reimburse Prosper Portland at that 50% rate, back to that original $1 million investment. So we'd expect about $175,000 a year through this program, through that project. This program aligns with the Prosper Portland Strategic Plan in several ways. It provides the agency with a new tool to support industrial redevelopment. Second, it requires a focus on traded sector jobs that offer quality wages. And third, it delivers on Prosper Portland's Financial Sustainability Plan by offering a new source of funding from a public resource. As you may remember from the recent update on the Financial Sustainability Plan, there are four pillars of the new business model, the second of which is to secure additional public funding. The Business Oregon Industrial Sites Readiness Program is just one of these sources of additional public funding that Prosper Portland is pursuing as a part of the Financial Sustainability Plan. If approved, by being the City of Portland's public sponsor for industrial sites readiness program, Prosper Portland will be able to support industrial redevelopment projects that further the agency's job creation and social equity objectives. Not only would Prosper Portland be able to incentivize industrial employment growth and help connect those opportunities to priority populations, it would also have access to resources to further fund strategic plan and social equity objectives. The additional resources could be used to fund programs such as workforce development programs, small business technical assistance programs, programs to build local supply chains to traded sector industries, which would focus on growing women-owned and minority-owned businesses, and towards our affordable commercial programs. So our next step is to have Business Oregon finish up the administrative rule update process. We're expecting that in May 2018. In the meantime, Prosper Portland will work on our internal process and policies for this program, which may include working with the Council of, the Council for Economic and Racial Equity. Then we'll take this, if approved by you all, we'll take this to the Portland City Council to be designated as the City of Portland's agent for this program. Then Prosper Portland would be able to submit applications for projects and have projects accepted into the Business Oregon program. That was a lot.
Thank you. All right. Questions? Comments?
No, it all made, it all made sense.
Great.
To me, as a, I mean, yeah, nice introduction and very nice explanation of the rationale for why, you know, in terms of making sure that we have a, we're contributing to that Financial Sustainability Plan. I did just, and so thank you for that, both of you. One quick question with regards to staffing implications. Should we get this? Does that mean that Prosper Portland would need to hire new folks, or would you be just sort of, you know, what would need to happen? What would be the financial impact, sort of staffing-wise, to accommodate this endeavor?
Yeah, well, if you can chime in as well, the, I went through the application process myself. In my previous role, I was administrator of this, part administrator of this program. And most of the information that the state would require for local government to submit is pretty straightforward. Demographic information, the land use, it's a lot of the information, just simply synthesizing the information. Now, there is some workload to make sure that Department of Revenue will report the right income tax revenue amount. So there's some, there's some workload there. But I believe that we have probably enough within our, in our existing staff, but if not, we can certainly look to some limited duration staff as well, project by project.
Yeah, I agree. I think between the capacity that we have managing the enterprise zone.
Right.
I think that is helpful. And then I think that we would anticipate already doing the investments.
Right.
And making the investments. So I think this is in line with, you know, making applications in terms of getting reimbursed for that. So I, I think it would be within the purview of a project manager, particularly if we were working with a development partner on the ODOT blocks or another property that we already own. Now, I think, you know, in the event that the program were to really expand, I think that might be a different story, but given that the annual cap on this allotment, I would anticipate that we will be able to fully staff it within our current capacity. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you.
No further questions?
Another question too, just in terms of the risks. So the improvements have to be done upfront, and it's a reimbursement program, right? So what happens if you don't meet, say, the job creation requirement? It's a requirement, right?
Yeah.
That there's 50 jobs or whatever the number.
Right.
So what happens if that's not met? Or are there other risks that somehow the reimbursement doesn't come through?
Yeah, no, the, I think the, I think the concern is, is, well, we'll point it out. I, I would view it actually, the reason why I believe that this proposal is a good one, actually, is because it's the only program that really incentivizes local governments to make sure that when we redevelop or develop industrial lands, that we shoot for the best jobs. Because there's incentive now, because you're going to get income tax out of it. And in today's economy where you have a lot of e-commerce fulfillment centers, this is especially even more important strategically, because industrial land is supposed to create middle wage jobs. And enterprise zone program doesn't get to that. It's a property tax, it's a different kind of structure. If you overlay this system, then it encourages organization like Prosper Portland to make sure that we shoot for the good jobs. But you're right, if we don't meet those criterias, then we won't get the reimbursement. And so we have to look for And so we have to look for different ways to do that, which is what we've been doing in the past up to this point.
So it's really just about evaluating the company upfront, right? In the most stringent way to make sure that we think that they'll perform.
Which we should be doing to begin with.
Right, right.
So our urban renewal districts, it needs to be tied to our traded sector strategies. That's the way it's supposed to be done, but we now have even more incentive to do that.
Okay. All right. Further comments? Questions? Okay, then. All right. Well, all those, would someone like to make a motion, then, to adopt Resolution Number 7262?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Okay. So, next up, we have an update on the Green Cities Industry Cluster. Pam Neal and Trolls Adrian, welcome. Thanks very much for coming.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. My name is Trolls Adrian, and I'm the Business and Industry Manager here at Prosper Portland.
And I'm Pam Neal. I'm on the Business and Industry Team, too, and I'm the Green Cities Lead.
So, yeah. So today, we are, Pam and I are here to tell you, in our continuing series of updates on our traded sector target clusters, we're here to talk about our efforts in the Green Cities world, our Green Cities Cluster. In this update, we are going to provide you with just a brief recap of the overview we provided last board meeting on the Technology and Media Cluster. Gave a brief overview there of our cluster strategy, just recap a little bit what we talked about there. And then I will provide that, and then afterwards Pam will provide an overview of the industry, some of our accomplishments, what are our current initiatives, as well as what are our next steps as we continue our work in this very important cluster for Portland. So, as far as strategic plan alignment, our cluster work in general falls primarily within two of our pillars, the ones related to creating, maintaining middle-wage jobs and quality jobs for residents, as well as the formation of new partnerships, what we call 21st century partnerships, to accomplish economic development objectives. In terms of the Green Cities Cluster, you will find today, the partnerships piece is particularly important because of the complexity of the cluster, but of course, jobs as well. Now, this is a new slide. You haven't seen it before, so it's not quite a recap, but I thought it was important to kind of illustrate the way we, as an organization, approach our cluster work. So this was actually the organizing framework that was used when Prosper Portland first initiated its cluster work in 2009, supporting four key traded sector clusters. So the concept here is that you begin by investigating and inventorying what is in the cluster, convene the right partners, private sector, et cetera, identify what needs to happen in order to grow the cluster, act on it, and then evaluate. What I think is especially important here is to, is to circle. This is a continuous process, and it is very sensitive to the business cycle. So, for example, when Prosper Portland first began its cluster work, we were coming out of the Great Recession, job creation, supporting the firm growth overall was a key objective. Since we are now at a very mature point of the business cycle, our efforts have changed quite a bit. What we're currently working on are things like workforce challenges, supply chain support, localized supply chains, entrepreneurship development, and of course, most importantly, the equitable lens that we now employ to everything we do here, which includes our traded sector work. And I think one important thing to point out is that without our traded sectors, Prosper Portland would not be able to achieve its objectives of creating an equitable economy in the city of Portland. This is very obviously something we're focused on at the moment. Just to recap, what is a cluster and why, and what are the main components? We're not just talking about large companies here, or even small companies. It's an intricate ecosystem that involves multiple players and entities and individuals. It's a combination of talent, anchor companies, large, small service providers, as we mentioned at the last commission meeting, and then, of course, the cluster infrastructure, be it physical infrastructure or even institutional infrastructure, like universities and national, international organizations. And so, again, going back to the last slide, you identify and intervene in various areas, depending on where you are in the business cycle and what the individual cluster needs. And that's the way we approach all of our cluster work. And what you'll find, again, here is, as Pam goes through the Green Cities work, it's quite advanced when it comes to green cities, as far as how we've approached it over time and identified tweaks and flexibility. Another important point to our clusters is they sustain a large number of middle-wage jobs in the city, including quality wage jobs. Quality wage jobs are those that pay more than $42,000 a year. Middle-wage jobs are those that pay more than $42,000 a year, but also do not require any more than a high school diploma in order to achieve the job. The Green Cities Cluster is actually our second, has our second highest concentration of those jobs, but it also has our second highest concentration of the quality wage jobs. So in a sense, you can call the Green Cities Cluster our most complete, from both a vertical perspective, in terms of the job, the types of jobs that are in the cluster, and horizontally, the types of firms, the diversity of the cluster across industries and types of firms. Just going back to the anchor, this thing is dying on me here. There we go. Go back. There we are. Going back to the concept of the right anchor companies, it's always important to call out who are the logos in town that are supporting, from a private sector perspective, the jobs that are in our clusters. These are just some of the companies that we work with across the Business and Industry Team. One to call out in particular around Green Cities is what's called, it's a company called Avangrid. You'll see it at the bottom left of this slide. It is currently, it's now an American company headquartered in Orange, Connecticut, but formerly was known as Iberdrola, a Spanish clean tech company that maintained its U.S. headquarters here in Portland for many years. In 2012, Pam and the rest of the team actually worked to successfully retain the headquarters of that company here, which is an important economic development activity. In addition to expansion and attraction, you also sometimes have to work with companies to help keep them here. Then when they were acquired by Avangrid, that headquarters became the headquarters of the Renewables Division of Avangrid. So we've actually been successfully able to retain a lot of jobs in the city and grow them here. Currently, about 350 employees in Portland, with job creation nationwide from this company alone, around 40,000. It's a very important company to the city and to the region. And so with that, I'd like to hand it over to Pam for the update on the current activities in the Green Cities Cluster.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Branham. So Portland has developed a significant Green Cities Cluster, which is thriving here due to a concentration of talent, world-class companies, and a growing commitment to sustainability. The demand for low-carbon and environmentally-friendly goods and services will continue to drive new technologies and businesses that will generate jobs here. Portland is consistently ranked as one of the most sustainable cities in the world. In 2017, the Clean Tech Leadership Index ranked Portland fifth out of the top 50 metros in the U.S. for clean technology leadership, noting strengths in green building, energy efficiency, environmental, and advanced transportation solutions. Continued growth in this cluster will help the city meet many of our economic, environmental, and social goals. The Green Cities Industry, according to industry standards, has 12,634 jobs in Multnomah County, but in-house analysis of the city of Portland wage data quantifies this cluster with more than 18,000 jobs in the city alone. It's difficult for us to quantify the Green Cities Cluster, because the federal classification system hasn't quantified this relatively new sector. Part of the problem is that many of the companies cross over into other industries where they self-identify. So, for example, an engineer working on electric vehicle may classify themselves as a motor vehicle manufacturer. But generally, when people think about the Green Cities Industry, they think about renewable energy generation, wind and solar, but the Green Cities Cluster is a broad category of companies that produce products and services that benefit the environment or conserve natural resources. Some of our anchor companies include Avangrid, which Trolls had mentioned, ClearResult, Vestas, PGE, Tetra Tech, ZGF, and CH2M Hill. This industry offers a wide array of jobs, falling in areas such as manufacturing, sales, installation, maintenance, and engineering. This industry provides high-paying and middle-wage jobs, which creates a number of opportunities for Portlanders. This industry not only pays well, but pays for those without a higher education. Almost half of the jobs in this cluster are held by workers with a high school diploma or less. Over the last five years, employment has grown from, by 10% in Multnomah County, exceeding national growth rate of 4%. The city of Portland has played a critical role in fostering growth by adopting policies that created demand for clean tech products and services. In 2017, the city of Portland continued to be a leader by adopting aggressive goals to reduce carbon emissions and the commitment to be 100% renewable by 2050. This strengthens our leadership in green development by keeping the city at the forefront of innovation and has positioned our companies to address the growing global demand for these types of products. The work we do today is really a progression of what we started in 2009, when we first adopted our cluster strategy. Initially, the strategy took a subsector approach with a focus on renewables, electric vehicles, and green development. And that approach resulted in key successes, such as the retention of the North American headquarters of Vestas and Avangrid. And at a broad scale at that time, staff build extensive industry knowledge and relationships. In 2013, we acknowledged the industry was changing, so we revised the strategy based on industry feedback and key market trends. The updated approach moved us from a subsector focus to one that's more cross-sector, with goals to not only create jobs and investment, but to drive innovation by leveraging Portland as a living laboratory for early adoption of new technologies and to reduce consumption of natural resources by utilizing our expertise to benefit economic growth with environmental performance. We also promote our leadership and sustainability. In 2015, with a new strategic plan, we prioritized our work to focus on middle-wage job growth with an emphasis on creating opportunities for underrepresented populations. And I'm going to talk now about our current initiatives, and then I'll talk about next steps. So our work supports businesses with a variety of resources, and we are flexible to respond to the current needs of the industry. Today, I'm going to go into more detail on some of the work that we do, including job creation, innovation, market expansion, living laboratory, and partnerships. To support our existing companies, staff visits approximately 50 businesses per year to provide direct business development support. We proactively target manufacturers, small-to-medium-sized companies, East Portland employers, entrepreneurs of color, and female-led firms. We also assist companies that are considering an investment here. We work closely with our partners at Greater Portland Inc. and Business Oregon to make the business case for companies looking to relocate. Several of the companies who have relocated here have taken advantage of our grant and enterprise zone tax abatement, and therefore have signed workforce agreements to target underrepresented populations when hiring and provide career pathway opportunities for their employees. We work closely with Work Systems, our workforce development partner, to connect job seekers with these employment opportunities. We are currently participating in the Careers Northwest Manufacturing Marketing Campaign. This is with Work Systems and other partners to bring awareness of regional manufacturing employment opportunities. There are companies here in Portland that are doing amazing things. The goal here is to expose a variety of audiences to the opportunities and to help recruit more diverse candidates to these roles. Also utilizing our relationships, we encourage firms to participate in the Summer Works Program, a program that provides summer internship opportunities for youth. And in the picture here, you can see the CEO for Stevens Water, who participated in the program and hired Cassia here. And after the summer, they hired her on, and as a result of her participation in the program, she changed her major. The 2013 strategy called for an increased support to entrepreneurs and highlighted the value of promoting innovative firms and their technologies to larger corporations. As conveners, Prosper Portland is able to facilitate mutually beneficial relationships between them. We are currently working with, currently working to connect early-stage companies to larger companies who are offering mentorship, office space, financing, and networking. The larger firms benefit in developing these strategic partnerships, which enables them to be closer to the innovative products coming into the market. One example is a Jaguar Land Rover Innovation Incubator. Since they opened in 2015, they have supported 19 startup firms, including several entrepreneurs of color. And we are currently working with Autodesk and Freshwater Trust, who are also looking to open incubator models here. Large companies are also looking to invest in clean tech startups. Access to capital for clean tech firms continue to be a barrier. Unlike software, many of these companies are capital-intensive and require a longer term to be profitable, which makes it difficult for them to attract traditional capital. Over the past four years, in partnership with Oregon Best, Prosper Portland has connected multinational corporations with their smaller clean tech companies at an event called Eco Capital Connections. This event brings the most active corporate investors from around the world to Portland to meet with our clean tech startups. In the last four years, we have arranged over 500 meetings. And one success story that came out of this event is Energy Storage Systems. They are a battery storage company that started out of the Portland State Business Accelerator, and they raised their Series A and Series B totaling $18 million from introductions we made through this program. They are now in full production and employ 45 people. As global leaders, our companies are in an excellent position to export their technologies in markets that are addressing resource conservation and energy independence. Prosper Portland helps small-to-medium-sized businesses make new connections and increase sales in domestic and international markets. While our local market may represent enough sales for small firms, firms that are looking to grow must look beyond the immediate market. On average, companies who export have higher sales, create more jobs, and have a higher wages than non-exporting firms. Prosper Portland provides a platform for our companies to share trade show exhibitions expenses at leading domestic and international trade shows. Many of our smaller firms find it too costly to participate in these shows alone. From the three trade shows we have organized this fiscal year, we have showcased 12 companies who made 85 new leads and generated $2.6 million in sales. Prosper Portland leverages federal, state, and private businesses whose total contribution amounted to twice what we put into the program. And this is a picture of our recent mission that we led to Mexico. We leveraged Business Oregon's partnership, and they engaged a consultant who prearranged meetings for the five companies that we exhibited, and we, our booth was in the U.S. Commercial Service booth. We accelerate consumer adoption through public-private partnerships with a key focus on retrofits, high-efficiency construction, and district-scale solutions. Property Fit is an innovative financing tool that unlocks savings in commercial, industrial, and multifamily businesses. It can be used for improvements in existing buildings, as well as new construction related to energy efficiency, renewables, water conservation, and seismic. This program leverages Prosper Portland's strength in partnerships, financing, and contractor connections. connections. We partner with solution providers and mission-driven institutions with similar values such as PSU and Oregon Museum of Science and Industry. On the right is a picture of the Oregon Convention Center and the solar array that they put on, an example of how we assisted that project. We provided information to OCC on the existing solar supply chain so that they could select who they wanted for the installation of that project. And speaking of solar, I know there was a question about the solar tariff and how that could impact our businesses. So the new tariff is on imported solar panels, and it will start at 30% and go down incrementally to 15 after four years. Solar World is one of our largest solar panel manufacturers in the U.S. They are located here in Hillsborough, and they're one of our anchor institutions. They were one of the co-petitioners on the tariff request to protect themselves from the competition from China and other Asian countries. So the tariff is a concern for other segments of the solar industry, specifically the developers and equipment suppliers. Most of the companies are still assessing what impact the tariff will bring, but they seem to be moving forward with their projects. And we've heard that they are managing the impact in order to stay competitive through lowering the cost or sourcing from locations that are exempt from the tariff. If there is an impact, it will likely be on the large utility-scale projects rather than on the small residential or commercial projects, since they're working on a smaller Prosper Portland directly invests in and partners with key community organizations such as Forth and Oregon Best, who partners with Oregon's higher education institutes to accelerate research into commercialization. And we also partner in signature events. This allows us to integrate our values into the programming and to showcase our companies. The Green Cities Cluster work delivers equitable outcomes for Portlanders by prioritizing and encouraging participation by middle-wage employers, women, and people of color. Technical assistance and resources are prioritized to participating firms to address any barriers that they have. This applied to the Eco Capital Connections event, where pitching assistance was provided to participating entrepreneurs of color and women prior to the meetings with the investors. In 2014 and 15, staff arranged 30 meetings for minority and women-owned firms. Since prioritizing those companies, the number has doubled. So moving forward, we plan to convene utility and energy firms and diagnose how we can assist them in building a more inclusive workforce. People of color, women, and youth are all underrepresented in these sectors. But upcoming retirements will provide opportunities to change that. 35% of the workers in these sectors will hit retirement within the next 10 years. And there's also a need to build our story of innovative projects that are happening in Portland and to talk about our companies as solution providers. This industry continues to express that the region's reputation as a global leader in sustainability is an important factor to industry support and growth. Thank you for your time, and I welcome we welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you, Pam and Trolls. I think we have three guests, so maybe we'll have them join us first, and then we'll call you back for questions, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
So first up, we have actually we have three people. Joanna Brickman with Oregon Best, Alan Bates with Reach Now, and Hector Dominguez with Smart Vineyards LLC. Thank you to all three of you for coming today.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair Cruz, Director Brannum. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Joanna Brickman. I am the Director of Collaborative Innovation at Oregon Best. Pam talked about us a little bit, but we are a nonprofit organization that's seeking to address global environmental challenges by funding and supporting clean tech startups that are offering promising technology solutions to those problems. We are founded in 2007 as a result of a grant from the Oregon Innovation Council with the Charter to Create Economic Opportunity Through Innovation in the Clean Tech Sector. The state has continued to fund us to do this work every biennium since, recognizing the value of that continuing and deepening state leadership in sustainability. Pam was mentioning some of that. It's important to provide this special support to the clean technology sector because it is one of the few markets that has continued to have a sustained gap in funding for early-stage technology development. This has been documented time and again in the Oregon Capital Scan and in nationally national studies as well. Clean tech commercialization is hard. It takes time and expertise to break into what are often risk-averse markets. There are often hard hardware rather than software. There's a long lead time from the time of concept to the time that these technologies reach the market and can have an impact. And as a result, it requires multiple forms of support to help companies cross the so-called commercialization valley of death. To be effective, Oregon Best relies on a network of partners, chief among them Prosper Portland's Clean Cities Cluster and Pam Neal specifically. Together, we are able to deliver combined value and a reliable support system for these important job creators. And as Pam talked about, a lot of these jobs are manufacturing jobs, which is a particular factor of the clean tech sector. I want to talk about two stories of companies that we've supported that are sort of typical of the kinds of companies that we've supported over time and which have also benefited from Prosper Portland's clean tech cluster work. First would be Indo Windows. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with them. When I first started at Oregon Best back in 2010, one of the first entrepreneurs I had the opportunity to meet was Sam Pardeau. He was the founder. And at that time, really what Sam had was a concept and an early, early prototype. It was about this big and made out of just materials that he had access to around his place. He had so many questions about how this was going to work and how it could reach scale and have the kind of impact he had in mind. And we were one of the few organizations that had the kind of resources that were necessary for a company like him to answer those questions. We connected him with researchers. We provided him with research funding and connection to other sources of research funding, paid for a PSU graduate student intern to develop a GIS system to help him target his distribution. And with Prosper Portland's help, we brought him to key industry conferences to meet with potential customers and investors. Fast forward eight years, and his company's thriving, and they're manufacturing in inner Northeast Portland, employing over 40 people, many of whom are refugees. I don't know if you've come across his We Hire Refugees program. It's a nonprofit that he started, and their product is being distributed internationally. So it's a great example of a company that has taken advantage of every resource that is available and has been very resourceful. Pam introduced Energy Storage Systems, or ESS. They're another company that's taken strategic advantage of the resources available to them. They are an all-Iron, therefore nontoxic, flow battery technology for grid-scale energy storage. These aren't the things that you would see in a car or in your garage. This is something that you would see, you know, at a wind generation system or at a power plant. They got their start at Portland State Business Accelerator, as Pam mentioned. Their initial lab research was actually sponsored by Onami, our partner organization. And once they'd proven out their concept in the lab, they really needed additional help. So they actually went to the U.S. Department of Energy's RPE program and were successful in getting one of their very competitive grants for doing that technology research, which is wonderful, but those grants require a 20% cash match. And so companies at that stage are typically really having a typical time finding that kind of match. We provided it. And as a result of those matching funds, they are now delivering product to the market. They've also received support from other partners of ours, such as the Wells Fargo Innovation Incubator Program, which is a partnership with the NREL National Lab. And then the connections to investors through the Eco Capital Connections program have resulted in significant investments from BASF and Pangaea, two investors that they hadn't connected with previously. And with that added investment, ESS is expanding their manufacturing facility in Wilsonville. At a time when the federal government is considering total elimination of programs such as RPE, which is actually on the blocks right now, they provide early-stage technology development funding for this sector in particular, local and regional support is ever more critical. Our work requires a sustained, long-term commitment. You know, we talk about Sam, you know, my first meeting with him in 2010. It's been a long time. It takes a long time for these companies to get to that point. And the fact that Prosper Portland has sustained that commitment over time is really notable and commendable and has provided a lot of value for the companies that we've supported and some of whom you'll hear from here. The companies in our portfolio and our organization are seeing terrific traction. The investments and grants that we've made supporting companies over the years have resulted in a 10-to-1 return to the Oregon economy. We're deeply appreciative of Prosper Portland's ongoing partnership and look forward to continued shared success. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Alan Bates. I'm the Market Manager for Portland for Reach Now. So we're a car-sharing service. And I'll tell you a little bit about what we did and how we got here. So 2015, Prosper Portland came and visited our offices in San Francisco. They encouraged us to look at Portland. We did. And then they helped in 2016 coordinate some meetings with some local city leaders. Fast forward, and we launched in September of 2016. They helped provide some demographic and tax information for us and to really help make the case for Portland as a choice for our service. And then they helped provide funding for electric vehicle charger charging stations for our building, as well as some infrastructure in our building. And they helped with an open house. And so now we serve 40 square miles of Portland with 350 free-floating car-share vehicles. And basically, we help commuters, low-car, no-car lifestyle folks take advantage of another transportation option. We fit in with transit and other forms of transportation because we combine with first-mile, last-mile, and make an ecosystem. So now we employ five people directly, FTE equivalents, 15 indirectly. We have a very strong relationship with the city, with PBOT, and achieving their goals. For every single car-share vehicle that comes into a system, about 10 private cars leave. So we have a lot of work to do ahead of us because we have a lot of people moving here. And so we're proud to really help people find different ways to move around the city without having to have private vehicles. We're the only electric car-share in Portland, so we have a fleet of electric vehicles that we provide, which will increase over time as we have more infrastructure. And in our first year, we saved about 5,500 gallons of gas, along with 55 tons of CO2 just in our small fleet. We're partnering with PGE and Pacific Power to create more infrastructure. We have 15,000 members strong, and we're the first car-sharing company actually to be out in the West Side, Hillsborough, Beaverton area as well. So really proud of what we've accomplished here, and thanks to Prosper Portland, we've really excelled, and they've given us the opportunity to really be here and exploit what we have. So it's been really nice working with them.
Good afternoon. My name is Hector Dominguez. I am the CTO for a company called Smart Vineyards. In Smart Vineyards, we help vineyard managers, agricultural managers, to use water better for irrigation. We have sensor networks that they are installed in the field, and we send that data to the cloud. In the cloud, our customers see what's happening on the ground with how water is available to the plants.
Okay. Thank you. And so how water is available to the plants, and that actually represents a very valuable asset for many of our customers. As a small company, we started in 2013, only two people, two founders. We started here in the Willamette Valley. We were working at the time in our garages, basically. And we have slowly working around building capacity, building all this different infrastructure that we need to be successful. So far, we are still here, and that's actually a good sign. We're still with many, many customers in front of us as well. And definitely, we have been benefited from the work done by the Green Cluster, Prosper Portland. We have joined different efforts organized by them that have allowed us to have this community engagement and also to get contacts to different investors. For instance, we showcased our sensor networks, our solutions, to the Water Cluster Meeting in Salem. So through that, we started getting some connections to researchers and all the consultants around water management in regional in Oregon. We have joined, two years in a row, all the introduction sessions with investors at the Eco Capital Connections, which is been creating a relationship with some of them that we expect to capitalize very, very soon. Also, last year, we joined the delegation to Mexico City's Green Expo and the Technology Cluster in Guadalajara. This allows us to get connections, strategic connections with some customers, their potential customers there, and experts that understand what's the market there. So a small company like us is very important to grow in an environment like this, like Portland particularly has this culture of sharing, sharing knowledge, sharing spaces. And we really appreciate that. We started as a two-person company, and slowly we are growing. With these, all these different efforts, collective efforts, have allowed us to start hiring people, to hire some part-time interns, for instance, from Portland State. We have accessed a number of research groups for to improve our technology, both at Portland State and Oregon State Universities. And all these have allowed us, have given to our company to get closer to our goals and also to contribute to the to our goals as a business and also to contribute to get greater good as using water for irrigation in agriculture much better. So recently, our technology and our company has been profiled in the news, which makes us very, to be very proud. We expect to grow. Also, in 2018, we are expanding our sensors installation, not only for vineyards, but also in hops, apples, blueberries, and nuts for the 2018 season. So and we really appreciate all the resources that through the Green Cluster we have been have access, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Of the speakers?
Just a clarifying question. I'm sorry, a gentleman from Reach Now, I forgot your name.
Alan Bates.
Alan, nice to meet you. So I just, in terms of your own company's growth and plans for international expansion as a traded sector, I just wanted to get a little feedback on that from you.
So we do intend to continue to grow. We are technically headquartered in Seattle, but we obviously Portland is a strong city for us and will continue to grow to other cities around the country that certainly have maybe some history of car-sharing and some new ones that we don't. Internationally, we have operations in 12 other cities. So yeah, it's a real deal, and car-sharing is growing significantly.
Comments? Well, thanks very much. Those are great anecdotes and really excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Trolls and Pam, would you like to? Okay. Any further comments and questions for Pam and Trolls? Okay. Well, all right.
Thank you.
Great work. Yeah, really. Thanks very much for the update and glad to see all the exciting projects come together. So thank you. All right. So now we're going to shift from our regular meeting to a slightly different format. So the meeting of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners is now adjourned. The members of the Prosper Portland Board will now meet as the commission's local contract review board to consider the next item on the agenda. And that- And that is item number nine, which is adopting findings in support of a contract-specific special procurement to award the Convention Center Hotel Garage Office Expansion Design Contract to Mortenson Construction, Inc. And Eric Jacobson will make this presentation. Thank you, Eric.
Good afternoon. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Brannum. So we're here today asking you to approve a resolution that will accomplish two things. One is we'll adopt findings, awarding a contract through a non-competitive process. And the second will be to authorize the executive director to enter into that contract with Mortenson Construction. Mortenson Construction is the design builder for the Convention Center Garage that is currently owned by Prosper Portland. It will begin construction by the end of the month. Mortenson Construction's headquarters out of Minneapolis. They started an office here about five years ago with two people, and they currently have about 135 employees. This project really springs out of the garage, which you last heard about in December of 2016. At that time, you authorized a design-build contract. And at that time, we also informed you that we had done some work, preliminary work, on an office expansion above the garage. And so that's really what this work is about, is advancing that work into conceptual design. So to orient you to the location, the garage is located on what we call Block 49. It's located between Northeast First and Second Avenues and Northeast Holiday and Multnomah Streets, right across the street from the Oregon Convention Center. To the direct east is the Convention Center Hotel site, and construction on the Convention Center Hotel started in December of last year. So here's a rendering of the garage, both as it's currently designed under construction and then on the bottom with the office tower located above it. This view is located, you're looking in this view from the corner of Northeast First and Holiday, basically on the sidewalk in front of the western end of the Convention Center. So the garage is in the foreground there. It's a seven-story, 422-space parking structure. And then to the right of the garage is the Convention Center Hotel. So on the bottom, you can see there, there's the office tower would be located on the north side of the structure and would rise above the garage. For strategic alignment, this really hits on two or three major themes in the strategic plan. The first is jobs, second neighborhoods, and the third is financial sustainability. For complete neighborhoods, the Lloyd Center, Lloyd District is a major employment center, well-served by transportation facilities. Instead of having the garage be a single-use standalone structure, this represents an opportunity to make it a mixed-use, higher-density development and really contribute to the further build-out of the Lloyd Center. And it's really has great transportation access, both in terms of vehicular access to I-5, as well as it's served by light rail. This is a jobs project as well. In terms of permanent employment, 100,000-square-foot building will accommodate about 500 employees when it's fully built. That's really important because this is located in the central city, and again, with really great transportation access. And for construction jobs, it will generate about 700 to 800 construction jobs. For financial sustainability, the air rights above the garage are an asset that are owned by Prosper Portland. This represents an opportunity for us to really maximize development of that asset and to participate in the development of those air rights with a development partner. So I want to orient you to, on the background, I mentioned this a little bit, but this project really does spring out of all of our efforts dating back to 1989 to bring to fruition the Convention Center Hotel, which was the primary goal of, for which the urban renewal area was established. It took us a while, and really, the efforts got a lot of momentum in 2012. That's when Metro issued an RFP to select a development partner. Through that RFP, it was a competitive process. They selected Mortenson Development, and the Prosper Portland Board endorsed that selection. So since then, we've been working with Mortenson Development and Mortenson Construction to bring forward the Convention Center Hotel. Through that process, we decided to build a standalone parking structure on Block 49 that would be owned and operated by Prosper Portland. And it was in 2016, as I mentioned, that the board had the final approvals to move forward with the design-build of that garage. And it was through that design process that we began to ask Mortenson to evaluate the potential for an office building on top of the garage, and they did some preliminary layouts, which I showed you in those renderings earlier. So construction's about to begin on the garage, and while we begin construction, we want to advance the design of this office tower into concept design and determine if it's So the feasibility analysis, there's three major components. The green box highlighted on the top here is what we're really here to talk about today. That is the contract with Mortenson. They will complete conceptual design and associated cost estimate for the office tower. It's for a not-to-exceed amount of $477,593. That's based upon the information that we've exchanged with Mortenson to date. Our intention is, as we negotiate that final contract, is to really make sure that we refine and hone that scope of work so that it completes. Only that work is necessary to reach, reach a go, no-go decision on the feasibility of the office tower. Simultaneous with the Mortenson work, we'll be hiring a real estate broker and a development advisor, and their jobs will be to advise us on the current state of the office market, lease rates, what the potential is to attract tenants to the project, how to structure a potential development partnership with a development partner, what are the options there we should be considering, and also preparing a pro forma analysis that will go hand-in-hand with the cost estimate that Mortenson prepares to help us determine if we're on target in terms of the overall cost of this project, to bring it in line that it makes sense financially to proceed. We think that work's going to take about six months. If that, if we determine that the project is feasible, we would come back to the board, and we would be seeking authorization to proceed with the next phase of design and analysis, which would be schematic and schematic design and design development, as well as some sort of solicitation to select a development partner, because we, Prosper Portland, don't have the financial resources to build this project on our own. So we're going to need a financial and development partner to work with us to make that happen. To approve today's resolution, you need to make two findings. The first has to do with promotion of the public interest, and we believe that's accomplished on this project through two significant ways. One is costs and schedule efficiencies, and the other is risk mitigation. As I mentioned, Mortenson Construction and their design team have already completed the design and are going to begin construction on the garage. So they have an intimate knowledge of the building, how it's already been designed to accommodate the office tower. They've already incorporated into the foundation design the superstructure necessary to support the tower. So as they move forward with the design, there are a lot of schedule and cost efficiencies in terms of knowing the work that's already taken place, as well as, as they identify issues, they can resolve those problems and issues within their team without having to go to another design team and seek some sort of resolution. In terms of risk mitigation, we see long-term, a lot of benefits to having the same design builder who's building the garage be the design builder for the office tower in terms of, you know, in terms of overall design and potential defects down the line. I believe you've received a written testimony from our outside counsel, Scott Slight. He's our design-build expert, and he has provided some testimony in support of the resolution, and in particular around these costs and schedule efficiencies. In addition, in the audience today is Carol Carlson with KLC Consulting. She is our owner's representative, consultant, managing and overseeing the construction of the garage on Prosper Portland's behalf. She has a considerable amount of experience with different contracting approaches, and she is here also to offer testimony on the resolution. The other special procurement finding you need to make to support today's resolution, if there's no favoritism or diminished competition, we think that's accomplished with this selection in large part because Mortenson was selected through a competitive process that was sponsored by Metro. Secondly, since then, they are the design builder for the garage. And third, as Mortenson goes through this design-build process, they will be soliciting competitive subcontractor bids. And will be, since this is a Prosper Portland-owned project, we have a lot of control of that. We'll be working hand-in-hand with Mortenson, and we'll also be providing technical assistance through that process to ensure that they maximize opportunities for certified firms. So on that note, the real equity impact on this project is that it's a construction project, and Prosper Portland's business and workforce equity policies will apply to the project from the very beginning of this design work all the way through construction. So I want to talk about that a little bit. We've worked with Mortenson Construction on one project that's been completed to date. That was not a project we owned, but we, it was a sponsored project in the sense that we sold the property to Mortenson. This is the AC Hotel at Southwest Third and Taylor Downtown. It was completed last year. And here, I put on the, on the display Mortenson's results as they compare to our goals on workforce and business equity. So as you can see there, on workforce equity, they exceeded the mandatory apprenticeship goal. They fell slightly short on the two aspirational goals, on minority and female participation. And then they exceeded the business equity goal for certified firms. I believe, so Mike Clifford with Mortenson Construction is in the audience. He's, he's available to come up and present some information and answer any questions as well. But I believe this was Mortenson Construction's first project working with business and equity goals like this here in Portland. And our, we think they performed pretty well. We think there's a lot of opportunity for them to take that knowledge they learn and apply it both to the construction of the garage as well as the office tower. So moving on to the Convention Center Garage, on the top here, now the garage hasn't started construction yet, so these are not the results, of course. These are our current projections based upon Mortenson's subcontracting to date. We believe they've assigned about 21% to certified firms, and I understand they have a few scopes of work still to assign going forward. But right now, that's, the projection is they'll accomplish about 21%. And then on the office expansion, our business equity policy applies to professional services as well as actual construction, hard construction costs. So for this work, this $477,000 worth of work, Mortenson has assigned 20.4% of that work to certified firms for the professional work.
Can you expand on that, just on which firms? Like what, what scope is going to those MBS?
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on it a little bit, and Mike can actually answer that question probably a little bit clearer. I understand the, probably the most significant contributor on the certified firms is the structural engineer, Lund Uppsall. They're a women-owned firm based out of Seattle, and they've done all the structural work on the garage, as well as incorporated into the garage the foundation needed to support the office tower. And they'll be fundamental in helping us understand, you know, the construction type and materials and weight and how that all bears upon the garage going forward. Off the top of my head, the only other firm I can think of is Samada, which is a civil engineer. And I, other than that, I think I'd rather leave it to Mike to talk a little bit more about their team.
Great. Other questions before we have testimony?
Just a quick question. How does, how do these historical results and, and current projected results compare to other projects in the pipeline or, or already nearing completion? The expectation being if this is a, this is a proper property, we ought to be, you know, at least setting the standard
Yes.
for, for these goals?
Yes. I don't have all the results in front of me. They are available on our website, and, you know, I guess there's a wide variety of accomplishment of different goals. Some projects that we've sponsored or owned have accomplished very high in terms of certified firms. For example, I believe the Alberta Commons Project, which is just completing construction right now, I believe accomplished in the range of 80% certified firms on the construction I believe the Lenz Commons Project, which also is, that's a Prosper Portland-owned project, I believe accomplished around, I want to say between 25 and 30% on the certified firms on the construction side. And I don't have the professional services side, but I believe they exceeded the 20% goal on that, too.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Eric. We might, we might have more questions.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
We'll get back to you. All right.
A little bit more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
We're almost done. We're very close. I know, it's Valentine's Day. We're getting close, right?
No, please continue.
So community participation and feedback. We haven't talked to anybody specifically about the action that's in front of you, but we have talked to stakeholders generally about the concept of building an office tower on top of the office, on top of the garage, in particular through a design review process a year and a half ago for the garage. I would say the design commission was very interested in having us maximize the development opportunities for the garage from an urban design and overall community development perspective. And secondly, we've presented our budget and intend to spend these funds on this feasibility analysis to the GO Lloyd Board. And again, they were generally speaking supportive of the idea. Seems like everybody thinks it makes sense to go ahead and see if this is feasible. And what we'll do over the next six months is circle back with those stakeholder groups and present our findings and get some feedback. So with that, I will say we're here to ask you to approve the resolution, and we appreciate your input and feedback as we embark on this process. So if you have any of that, we appreciate it, and I'll take any questions you have as well.
Okay.
I got one, real quick one. Eric, if that's all right.
Yeah, please.
If I can jump in. On the AC Hotel project, when you were showing the performance numbers for workforce, that was journeyman numbers on the bottom half, not, not total workforce, is that correct? Or is Mike, maybe Mike can answer that question. If you could back up the slide.
Sure.
I'll ask Mike when he comes up, too.
You talking about the business
14 and 6. 14 is our goal, 6% performance. That's journeyman numbers? Because I mean, that's, that's actually pretty close to workforce census in construction. That's total project? So 6% was total project? All right. We can do better.
Okay, well, thank you. So now we'll have Mr. Clifford, Mike Clifford, and Karen Carlson come up, and we may be back to Eric, but thank you very much for that presentation. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm Mike Clifford with Mortenson Construction. Glad to be here and appreciate the partnership that we share. We are excited to get started with the garage project. We're awaiting our permit and should be building here in a couple of weeks. So I understand you may have a few questions, and I'm happy to answer those as, as they arrive.
Okay. All right. Mr. Myers, did you have anything further? Oh, okay. All right.
I got the point.
I do have a question. So Prosper Portland has a responsibility to provide those parking spaces, right, to the hotels, starting in 2019? How would this impact that? Would you be able to, to build this office tower on top of it without impacting those operations of the, of the garage?
That's a, that's a great question. That's, right now, Prosper Portland has a contract with, with Hyatt to provide that parking, and one of the things that we would have to investigate is our construction means a method to reduce those impacts as well as review the agreements, and we have money included in our, in our proposal to, to help with that because we helped negotiate those agreements originally, to review those and negotiate with Hyatt to, to determine what would be feasible and determine if, if indeed those impacts would not affect Hyatt's business adversely.
So you think there is probably a way to build with, while keeping those spaces available during construction?
It would be very difficult to not have any impacts to spaces, but could there be measures in place to avoid impacting their business operations in a way they'd be agreeable to, potentially? So could we rent a nearby, an adjacent parking lot and be able to minimize the impact to the garage and then continue the parking?
Right. But you couldn't keep the spaces in the new garage operational during construction?
We can keep probably all but the top deck of spaces operational.
And that could be a common And that could be accommodated with another lot, maybe?
Correct.
Yeah.
And we'd have to look at their loads, and there's, there's a lot to that discussion and probably a couple of months of investigation there.
Okay.
I did have one quick question. I know it's probably not a very fair question, but what were the mobilization costs? Mobilization is kind of ongoing on that site. What do you, what do you think your estimated mobilization costs were?
For, for the garage?
No, for the, the site where you're at right now. So the hotel and the garage?
Just to mobilize? I don't have that off the top of my head. My guess would be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Just kind of getting set up and then kind of learning the lay of the land is?
Yeah, probably, probably in, you know, in the range of $2,000 to $500,000. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Karen Carlson. I'm K L K Consulting. I'm currently under contract with Prosper Portland to be owner's representative on the construction phase of the parking garage. For over 35 years, I've worked either for or with public agencies. So I truly understand the importance of keeping the public's interest in mind when you contract. I have been, I have contracted probably about every way you can through those years. This particular project is really uniquely suited for design-build. I was asked to take a look at this, and as you have heard from Eric, the, the garage has been designed with the addition of an office tower in mind. It's got its foundations and features that are there. And moving ahead with Mortenson is probably the most efficient and least-risk way of procuring the pre, pre-development costs or cost estimates in pre-development work. Although I've only worked with Mortenson for a few months now, I have found them to be a very efficient firm, very reliable, and I believe they are well-suited for this work.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay. Thanks to both of you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. All right then. If there are no further comments or questions, anything for Eric?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and vote then. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7263?
Can I have a little bit more discussion? Sorry. I mean, I don't necessarily have a specific question for Eric, but I'll make it a question. How about that? To start a little bit of a dialogue on it. So we've had a couple of conversations. I'm just concerned about the scope of this and maybe the timing in terms of doing the financial analysis. I mean, a lot of it you can do and kind of back into what you can afford to build this for, and you do sort of an analysis at that level without spending half a million dollars is one, one level of the analysis. And then some of these other kind of feasibility questions, you know, in terms of the obligation to keep that parking operational and what that could cost. I mean, that might be an extraordinary cost that, that just doesn't warrant then building this addition. So I just want to make sure that before we spend a huge chunk of money, that you do some of the low-hanging fruit.
Right.
To kind of check off those boxes before you spend so much money on, on this, kind of this next level of design.
No, that makes sense. So let me see if I can respond. We've already done very preliminary pro forma, and it shows we're within range in terms of the cost of the project. But it does show that we need to really kind of be very cost-conscious and probably chip away at the current cost estimate. I've already given a notice proceed to the development advisor to prepare a pro forma. So when we give a notice proceed to Mortenson, we'll already have a pro forma that will have some numbers in it that will give us an idea of where we need to be from a cost perspective. So at the very beginning of the design phase, we can basically put a number out there and say, we think this is about our target. In terms of the, our obligation to provide parking to Hyatt, that's one of Mortenson's tasks early on in the project. And they have an extensive relationship with Hyatt, and we're really going to be relying on them to engage Hyatt in those conversations. I think what Mike said is right, is that what Hyatt needs really is, especially on the valet services, is they don't, I don't think, we still have to have this conversation with them, but I don't think they really care if we parked those cars in this structure or two blocks away in another structure. Now, if that costs us money and that's an extraordinary cost, that's something we need to certainly evaluate. But I think from a conceptual level, I don't think Hyatt would necessarily care if we parked them one place or another. So that's something we need to engage in. We can do that very early in the process, together with the pro-form analysis. If the numbers, if, if we're seeing red flags everywhere, we can pull the plug on this work. There's no need to go through $500,000 worth of work if we're seeing a bunch of red flags, and we would certainly do that. And so that's our intent here, is to go through this one step at a time, check off the boxes, make sure we're, seems like everything's going in the right direction, and continue that way. So I hope that at least partially answers your question, but if not, please provide a follow-up.
Yeah.
I'm Eric Iverson, General Counsel of Prosper Portland. What I heard Mike say there was that we might not be able to use the top floor. Now, I may misunderstand, but there's lots of extra capacity. We know that it's going to be seasonal in terms of the use of the garage. The Hyatt will not need the entire garage. Also, some portion of the parking is excess for us to use for public parking. So we could conceivably arrange it so that the public parking isn't available. It's not, it's not obligated to anyone. But I would think that in, in this analysis, if that concept is not correct, we would quickly reassess and not go forward to other stages if that cost seems too high from the beginning. But I think it's, it doesn't sound to me like most or all of the parking will not be available for Hyatt, or we would have to incur incredible costs or large costs to find alternate sites. But I would think that would be one of the first things we'd assure ourselves.
Okay. And then, so there's a 20, 20% expectation on the MWSB for this scope of work. So I don't know. I mean, some of the stuff that we looked at was maybe scope that seemed premature for this early level of feasibility, and it makes me wonder if it was to try and reach some MWSB targets. It just, if, are we tied to that 20% for this preliminary scope? I mean, are we still trying to, if it's predominantly, you know, an architectural, if it's Mortenson and CGF is, is the primary piece of the scope?
No, we're not. It's a goal, and we try to balance, you know, meeting a goal with having the right-sized scope for the project and getting a good dollar value for our efforts. So I think that's what we're going to do. I think primarily we'll make sure we get the right scope of work, and then we'll look at how that plays out in terms of certified firms. And I think the key thing is, I don't think we would add scope just to achieve a 20% goal. It'd be more like, well, within the scope we need to do, are we maximizing opportunities for certified firms?
Okay. And then my last question is that timing of, so you're likely going to go solicit proposals for a development partner? And so the timing of that, because I think you mentioned in your presentation that you would conceivably keep going through design before doing that, or?
No, we're still, that's, that's something we're, conversations we're still having as to the timing of that, whether or not we should complete this feasibility work and then go out for a development partner, or if we should be possibly moving that forward and doing it now as we embark upon this feasibility work. And I don't think we've landed particularly. We probably wouldn't embark on the next phase of significant design costs without having a development partner. So that's something we need to look at. And again, that would be something we'd come back to you in six months and have a conversation about as well.
Okay. So my comments are really all just around the scope of this phase, because I think it makes absolute sense to have Mortenson doing
Yeah.
this piece. But, so it was just more of the scope issues.
Sure. And we'll, we're going to take a hard look at that.
And I don't think, in your presentation, I don't think you identified or clarified that we've already retained a real estate broker, right?
Uh, no, we've, we're in the process. We've narrowed it down to two.
Got it.
And we're going to have interviews and select sometime probably in the next two to three weeks.
And then we, and, but we do, and we do have a development advisor or that?
Correct, we do.
Okay. So, so very soon, we'll have more ability to nail some of these numbers down, it sounds like.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Further comments, questions? All right then, I would accept a motion to approve Resolution Number 7263.
So moved.
Moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 7263?
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. The meeting of the Commission's Local Contract Review Board is now adjourned. Since this is the final item on the agenda, the Prosper Portland Board meeting is adjourned as well. Thanks very much.